Good evening, welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. Borough Council did have an executive session for personnel related to hiring the new borough manager, previous to this meeting, from 6:00 to 6:30. Welcome everyone to Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No council action making motions or approvals is taken during the work sessions. Tonight we have a couple of items for discussion, and the first one will be the agreement with the Friends of Tallyrand related to the stage. We'll give you a minute to take a look at that. Council, while you're also looking at it, it was in your packet. If you have any questions or comments.
Barb, I think what we kind of wanted to do is, this was changed from a lease agreement that was initially drafted by our solicitor. The committee worked on it, changed it to a cooperative agreement, changed some language. So, what we wanted to do here this evening is just to make sure that council is in good standing with this, everything's in order. Anything else that you would want to add? Once you come to some type of agreement to this cooperative agreement, then the plan was to send it to Friends for their review and approval.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we wanted to go with this. But, since Rick's here and we're going to be talking about it, I mean, I thought maybe they would be able to add, we could, you know, just open the discussion and discuss it openly right now.
Sure, that's great.
The other thing that I'll add is, I did get, I had sent, after the changes were made, I sent this back over to our solicitor, Stover, and he only had one comment for council, and that is, under the number eight, which was the renewal of the agreement, to remove it, he suggested that we have something in the agreement that talks about the terms. Whether, you know, it's a five-year term that automatically continues every year thereafter, or if it's just on a year-to-year basis, or three years, whatever it is that you decide, he thought there should be something in the agreement that talks about not only the timeline of the agreement, but also if one party or the other wants to get out of the agreement, that they give a timeframe for, that we provide a timeframe for getting out of the agreement. So, that was his comments.
Does anyone have a thought on what would be a good length for this agreement? And it would automatically renew with some sort of, I don't know if it's a year, if something's going to change, we give six months' notice, or a year. I don't know what's really appropriate, so anybody has some thoughts on that?
If we keep the language of Section Eight the way it was, and just change it from the lease to the agreement, change that word. Section Eight, it's crossed out and in blue, it says, "The party shall agree that the lease shall automatically renew." If we change the word lease to agreement, keep the five-year term with the six months' notice to terminate by either party?
And just change lease every time to cooperative agreement?
Lease to agreement. That's pretty much what I did throughout the document, was change lease to agreement.
Is that number two?
It's number eight? Sorry, I can't hear you.
They couldn't hear you.
On item number eight, in this document that we're looking at, it's the bottom of page two, if we just change the word lease to agreement, and keep the same terms, that it's a five-year agreement with a six-month opt-out.
The last part of that sentence has two times it mentions lease, we just change that also to agreement then, correct?
What happens if the lease isn't renewed?
You mean at the end of the?
What happens if the lease isn't renewed? You guys leave town, or something like that?
Well, my question was, you say it's a law, we're a law.
Rick, yeah, press that button there, Rick, so you think we can hear.
Now, what happens, I mean, if the borough says, "We don't want to do this anymore," there's a stage sitting there, and I don't understand how that would happen, you know, what would happen then?
Well, the same question, or if you guys say, "We don't want to do this anymore."
Well...
Or, we're going to die. You know that, and none of us get out of here alive.
We're going to set up the organization, and according to this, they're up a quarter of a million dollars in the bank, which, I'm not sure that's a reasonable number, but let's just say it is. I mean, that gives you a little runway for doing whatever you want with it, shutting it down. I mean, it would pay for maintenance for ten years, so...
And our dream is to bring others, younger people on.
Which is easy.
Not all retirees like us, that will carry the banner and keep it going.
So, is what you're saying, is that if you decide you no longer want to be involved, or you just don't want it anymore, or you leave, would it then be transferred to the borough?
No. The Friends of Tallyrand is a corporation, nonprofit corp.
Okay, and where does it go from there?
As individuals, as an example, if I, if my diabetes really goes crazy, I would be replaced with somebody else on the Friends of Tallyrand. You don't want to shut down the Friends of Tallyrand completely, because our mission is to continually raise money for needs in the park, not just the band show. That's why we're called the Friends of Tallyrand, that's what our charter says, that's our job.
And it's also to keep what's been going on for I don't know how many years, the concerts in the park. When we have bigger groups than they want to play at the stage, they can play at the stage, so I'm sure it'll be integrated. Some things will go on at the gazebo, some things will go on at the stage, and more entertainment will come in, and there are people who want to keep that going.
Okay.
So, that's, I mean, the idea is to build an organization, which we've already started, I think we have, what, ten members of our committee, and trying to work with Tallyrand Park Committee and other committees that are experiencing shortages of people, and rather than have four or five different organizations, have a single organization with subcommittees that focus on flowers in the park, music in the park, whatever. So, and we've had favorable reactions to that from at least the Tallyrand Park Committee people. Yeah. And the other thing that I, well, okay, I'll move on to the indemnification. We talked about this before we put the agreement together, I thought we had discussed that this would come under the borough's insurance, and we would pay for any increment in the insurance cost to the borough that the stage might lead to. Am I...
Yes, you are correct with that, and that was one of my questions, too. I don't know, do you remember checking in on that, Don?
Yes, I'm sorry to say this, Rick, but we're still waiting. Our insurance company wants to know how big it is, which you can't provide us yet, so we can't get a number for you.
Yeah, okay.
That's about as straight as I can answer it.
But we're still going down that path.
We're, yeah, I mean, we're looking, as soon as we know what the size of the stage that you're building, and what it's going to look like, then we can provide that to our insurance carrier, then they said they would be able to say, but I will say this, that typically, any other buildings that we've built, you know, we just did some out at Governor's Park, and they were, it's not very, it's very minimal as to what the insurance rate goes up, you know, for us, so. Now, in this instance, may not be so much for the stage as opposed to any type of incident that would occur.
But that, so we're still under that understanding, and we're, we know how big the stage is going to be, we just don't know how much it's going to cost to build, which I'm sure is something they want to know as an insurer.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just suggest, like, when, you know, when this is finalized, you know, is in draft form to give to you, you know, under number twelve, just make the comment, you know, still are understanding that, you know, the borough was going to put this under their insurance, that's how we understand it, we're just kind of in a holding pattern at this moment.
Right. The only other comment I have is, do we really want monthly bank statements, or quarterly due, or, you know, some way of reporting what we're doing? I don't know how much you want to see a monthly bank statement, but...
I think, once again, I mean, make that recommendation, just say, you know, whether it's biannual, quarterly, whatever.
Great.
That'd be fine.
Thanks.
I have a question for number three. It says, compliance with permitting, compliance with permitting requirements. Friends agree that Bellefonte Borough, being the owner of the property, may be required to be the applicant for certain permits. In those instances, Friends agree they would, they would be responsible for all costs associated with zoning permits? Is that, is that the way that reads it?
I rewrote that, Randy, so I can answer that question, and the answer is yes. I mean, because it's the borough property, if you, when Mr. Pratt goes to Center County Conservation to get a permit for the project, or, you know, they go to Center Region Code, it's going to have to be in Bellefonte Borough's name. So, since it's in our name, we just wanted to clarify that we'll be on the permit as the named applicant, but Friends is going to cover all the cost of the permit itself.
Okay.
That's the desire.
That's how I wrote it, too.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a question on number eleven. Is that crossed, it's in green, is that crossed out and that doesn't apply anymore?
I think my question was whether or not they needed to have separate insurance, or whether it could be covered on the borough's policy.
Right, okay.
So, it's tied to the next paragraph.
Paragraph, yes, and we had originally thought it could just go on ours.
Once we have the information that Donald needs to go to the insurance company, then at that point, they can determine, you know, what the incremental cost increase is, and we'll bite into it.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in my thought on that, I'm going to follow up. Because you mentioned indemnification first, and looking at it, the insurance under number eleven is probably where our insurance company's looking. Under indemnification, that would be more of an issue, that if there is an event over there, and someone happens to trip and fall, or something happens, you know, who's then responsible? I think what indemnification in this aspect would be, is that we want indemnified, that the people aren't going to come back and sue the borough, that we're indemnified, that's not, wasn't our, it wasn't our program that we were putting on to something in the park, you know, that that's what we would want indemnified from, being sued by someone, that something happens, that has no control of the borough, that's, I think, where we were coming from on...
Well, the way it's written, Donald, is that it's, the Friends are indemnifying the borough, not the individuals that might get hurt.
Oh, and we would take the responsibility, but that, then we would have to carry some sort of event insurance, is that, how does it work with the summer sounds from the gazebo?
I couldn't, I don't know if they have, I don't know if they have their own insurance, because I think, is that under the Bellefonte Historical and Cultural Association it puts it on, which is under the umbrella of HBI, and that's where the insurance lies.
Okay, I'll look into that and see what they're doing currently.
You know, we're going to end up being responsible. They follow the money, and they love that money.
Well, you're, that's, you're right, Doug, I mean, we just had an incident this summer, very similar to that with one of the events, but that's what we're trying to protect, I think, here.
This is the first I've seen this, like, less than an hour.
Saw this? So, I haven't really had time to read through it carefully, not that it means anything.
Yeah, we just saw it when it was handed to us tonight, so.
So, for me to...
You've had a little more time than we have, and neither of us had enough.
For me to ask questions and look at this carefully, I can't do it in fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I think we have to have another round.
Well...
You know, comments from you, comments from us. I'd like to, I'd like to digest on this overnight, anyway.
Tom, we, yeah, we just didn't want you wasting, I mean, we wanted to get a kind of a consensus from council, and then we'll provide a draft to you to respond back if we, right now, if we do it, we, you know, give it to you, there'd be comments, let's, if there's a structure where I, you know, we can get everybody's comments here, you know, which, the anticipation was it wasn't going to be resolved this evening, but we were going to discuss it this evening, give council a few days to come back to us with comments, then we'll make the changes, and then the thought was, is to send you, here's our draft, and then you guys can, then you get into a, you negotiate, you come back to us with your comments, and we'll try to finalize it that way, if that's okay.
That's perfect, and this is a very good start. I mean, most of what we talked about is here, so, yeah, we can work with the next draft, for sure.
And nothing takes my breath away, so.
So, for me...
The blue is eliminated, the green, and not like number eleven, what does the green highlighting mean?
I just, I had questions about whether or not they, as an organization, would need to have separate liability insurance, that's what we've been talking about, and I had asked Don about that.
I would think that's something that our solicitor could answer for us, or at least ask him.
Sure.
You know, he's kind of in the business, so...
Well, this was his original, I mean, I mean, he originally put this draft together, and I think what the committee did, Kent, was just kind of took out the, all the references to it being more like a lease type of agreement, rather, as opposed to more of, hey, we're working together with Friends to try to accomplish this, so, our attorney already had that in there.
Yeah, I just meant the questions that keep coming up about insurance, you know, clearly we're not sure, but he should be able to shine some light on that for us, you would think.
I think you guys, too, I think as a council, you should determine what you, what responsibility you want to take, for, you know, if you want to take accountability for the insurance, then, then we add it on to our policy. If you want Friends to go out and do it, then you make, you know, we put it in the agreement, and we tell them, you, you have to go out and get some type of policy, that's where, that's what we have to look at.
Right, and at this point, we have not heard from our insurance company because of the size, we don't know the size of the stage, that's the holdup, correct?
Cost of, cost of it, we know the size, right?
We know the size, but we don't know how much it's going to cost to build.
Right, that makes sense.
Depending on bells and whistles, so...
And those would be important for the insurance.
It probably could vary, half a million dollars, so I'm sure the insurance company would want to know that it's either at the higher end or the lower end.
Sure.
So, you know, and it could be that there will be some combination here, where the structure actually falls into the park's insurance, and we pay for any premium increase, and that anytime we have an event, there is some sort of insurance that the committee takes out for that event, in case something happens. Again, I'm just thinking logically, I don't know if that's how insurance companies work. I mean, I know at one point, my house was insured in perpetuity, they paid one, one premium, and it was insured forever. Unfortunately, it was only insured for $2,000, because it was taken out in 1897, but it was still enforceable, and so insurance companies do weird things, that's the point. But, well, as I said, I think we're close on this, and you'll look at what you want to do, and we'll look at our stuff, too.
But I would, I would suggest that you ask your solicitor, what amount of event insurance? I buy it for, when I have high school reunions at my house, I get it for like a hundred and a quarter, and it covers $2 million.
That's typically, usually what we see is a one to two million aggregate for, you know, insurance coverage, Tom.
Yeah.
You know, on anything, and then you go on to your other question, I mean, this is going to be a little bit different, but, you know, in other events, like when baseball teams come in and they're using our field and so forth, we make sure that they get, we see that they've self, that they put the borough on their insurance, so that that covers us. So, in a lot of instances, that's how we work it with specific events, but you're talking about events where people can get injured, where, you know, I think someone blowing on a trumpet is going to, you know, maybe the risk isn't quite as high as...
The trombone's the big...
Could be.
That's the problem.
If we could move on now, so we have time for Mr. Pratt from Keller Engineering, thank you for being here tonight. Do you want to stand up at the podium, unless you have a microphone there? This is yours, Don.
Good evening, I'm Keller Engineering, behalf of the Friends of Tallyrand.
Don, we had submitted a detailed request for determination, but we kind of boiled it down into six bullet points, is that what council's looking at tonight, the six points?
They got, they got your letter, and then in addition, they got the bullet points that you sent to me in red, so I think if we work off of that, Michael, that would be great.
Yeah, so I'll stay with the bullet points. So, number one is, we're asking for concurrence or acquiescence that our read of the ordinance requirements is correct, and the first one's an important one, and I assume it is a permitted use, but an open-air performing arts center would be a permitted use in the WBD zoning district.
I got some answers from our zoning officer, I'll run a couple of these, so the first one is yes, that is, that is permitted, so number one is a yes.
Okay, as an amusement enterprise. The second affirmation we're seeking is concurrence, that no new dedicated parking stalls associated with the structure would be required, but rather that the surrounding existing parking infrastructure can be used for events at the facility.
According to our zoning officer, since there's no formal seating, no new dedicated parking stalls would be needed, but she was a little bit hesitant, only because there are parking regulations for theaters, but there assumes dedicated seating, so I think we're okay there as well.
Okay. Third one's a little trickier, maybe. Third one's a little trickier, maybe, the proposed structure is going to be placed on a property owned by the borough, and I have to refer to it by the UPR, number's 32313014, which is part of the park proper, the park consists of several parcels, the back of the outdoor stage venue would back up on what everybody refers to as the subway parcel, that the borough also owns, under a separate UPI. That parcel, at least at one time, was subject to an environmental covenant because of the prior land use activities, namely a gas station operation, where leaking fuel was discovered in plumes emanating from the property. I, I am not sure if that covenant is still in place, but I'll assume it is until we can prove that it isn't. That covenant requires certain things be maintained on an ongoing basis relative to development of that parcel. And you could say, okay, what's it have to do with the adjoining parcel? Well, nothing, perhaps, is a technicality, but the fact is that the, the map plumes, we'll call it water and soil contamination, branch out from that parcel, and one of those plumes does come into the subject parcel proposed for development. So, do the covenants apply to the subject parcel? Well, I would think not, but the fact is, they noted that there was prior soil contamination there. So, the question is, should we proactively approach DEP on this matter, and ask for their input as to what may be required? And the reason I bring that up is you could say, no, we're not gonna do anything, we'll go to construction, you begin footing excavation, and you discover migrated gasoline, you can see it, it's colorful, it has a sheen, you can smell it, what do you have to do? Stop, demobilize the contractor, that's a cost, probably clean it up if it's there, you'd have to attend to it. So, it'd be a nasty surprise, I don't think that's a good idea. So, at a minimum, I think some environmental work may be in order, at least in the proposed structure area, but on top of that, should, does the council wish the department to be consulted with as part of this process, to see what they may say, in terms of permanent requirements or other obligations?
Don, I got a question for you, when, when did we remove those tanks, have those tanks removed?
When, when were they reviewed?
Removed?
The, I'm sorry, Ray, I didn't hear the question.
The tanks under the ground, when were they removed?
Uh, it must've been some time ago, because, you know, I think for over a 20-year period, they did, they did a study on that periodically, and that's how it got really environmentally cleared, but I didn't realize that this, you know, until we met with Michael, that this, the deed has the covenants in it, that speaks to the subway building, but I think they were, to answer your question, it had to have been probably over 20 years ago, because, you know, the studies that were done on a yearly basis, that had to be reported to DEP.
So, then there wouldn't really be a need for this, maybe, I mean, has that been that long, and?
As Michael said, you know, we went, when we did the waterfront project, we ran into the same issue, and it required, they had to come in and dig out so much soil, they called DEP, they had to dig out so much soil, it had to be taken to a special location, I mean, you just couldn't just dump it, this, it would be the same thing here, I would assume.
If it's migrated in the area of proposed excavation, and that's not the end of the world, but, you know, a delay claim from a contractor to shut down construction, that would be a cost that perhaps could be avoided if you look now. How do you look? You dig test pits, you investigate in the area of proposed footing.
Understand, but it's not showing anything, Dan, it's not like it's affecting the trees, it's not affecting the grass.
Nor did the prior studies, now, I don't know how they detected these plumes that they mapped on the adjoining properties.
The owners who owned it at that time did all the work, as far as I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't really, you wouldn't even maybe see it until you start digging.
Yeah, and you're, you're correct, it's entirely possible there's no impact to the proposed structure there.
So, do you, do you? Michael, do you have any idea what, what sort of footers are we putting in, or what, what sort of excavation may occur in that corner of the property?
We don't know the footing type or composition, no, that's a function of the underlying soils, it's in a floodplain, so could they be deep? Maybe, standard footing excavation, a six-foot hole, minimum, something like that, maybe eight.
There's no concern of any water, underground water, when you start doing that?
Always is, so, as part of the design process, they would do borings and foundation recommendations to handle that aspect of it.
There was a possibility of a well site where the stage is being located, at one time, in the last, in the last six months, we were considering boring some wells and covering the big spring and drawing the water from underground, and where the stage is located was a possible location of a wellhead, and I'm not sure what the depth of the water is going into the big spring in that area, so, is?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure either, I would estimate that probably the footing excavation would be fairly minimal, as opposed to a standard well depth, but I don't know.
I was gonna add that you say that because you're not using the subway, or, you know, the parcel that we're talking about, you're not gonna be building on that parcel, that you would require only a Center County Conservation Office permit. I know when I've worked with Jim Coslow at the, you know, Center County Conservation in the past for numerous park-related projects, if, if anything with DEP was required, he, he would just let me know that you'll need to let, you know, talk to DEP, so, I think, personally, if Center County Conservation gives you the permit and they don't require DEP notification, I, I can't see what we would, what would the purpose be of going through that process?
Yeah, I would just say that's a possibility, they would flag that if they thought that was necessary, but they're not the gatekeeper of that aspect of a project like this.
But would you think they would advise you to, you know, go to them, or not?
I think that's a possibility, but I think the more direct route is to consult directly with DEP with a request for determination, like we did with you tonight.
I'd be, well, I mean, that would be up to council, but, I mean, probably to be on the safe side, it might be best just to talk to them.
I think you suggested that we proactively, in one of your comments, you said you might wanna be proactive and go to the DEP.
Well, that's advice we'd give any other client under similar circumstances.
You looking for an answer on that?
Well, ideally, but I understand that maybe this needs some time for deliberation as well.
It, it does make sense to me that we should just contact them and avoid having to go back or redo something, or, or have them come in later, so I would agree to, to contact Pennsylvania DEP first.
Okay. The second facet of that is, we would also recommend that you conduct an environmental investigation of the proposed excavation area, that would be classified, I suppose, as a phase two, which would be some groundwork excavation to see if they can determine if any migratory plumes have, have gone in that direction, and that would be done by an environmental consultant, a scope and a price proposal would be prepared and offered to both you and the friends for consideration.
Barb, I almost think, I almost think we gotta get a proposal, I mean, and look at it.
Okay, so we'll work on the request for determination of the department right away, and then we'll work to line up an environmental consultant to present that. Item number four is almost an aside, the classification of the project as a land development, and there is one exemption in your ordinance that discusses, I'm sure the intent was amusement parks, it talks about amusement buildings, but we only ask the question, is this an amusement building, and therefore, could it be subject from your land development ordinance? That doesn't mean no ordinances prevail, the, the ordinance is still in effect, but it would become a site plan submission, more for your zoning officer review, as opposed to full council review. Either or, it's just extra steps in the land development process, and we need to know that as we begin this process.
Our zoning officer on that one, Michael, they, she says that land development, as defined by the MPO, shall include the improvement of one or, one lot or two or more contiguous lots, tracts, or parcels of land for any purpose involving a group of two, I'll skip that part, or a single non-residential building on a lot or lots, regardless of the number of occupants or tenure, so, according to her, she, she says that a formal land development submission would be required.
Understood.
And then going back to the last one, Mr. Johnson, you know, we, the Water Authority had some work done, and I'm wondering whether or not the, you know, that the work that they had, borings over there in that area, would be similar to what you would require? I mean, if it's already been done once, and we would get the report, could that be of help?
Not necessarily, was it a test well?
I couldn't, I can't hear, the echo in the room.
Was it a test well?
No, it was not a test well, they were doing borings to see where the, where the water was.
Where the water table was?
Yeah, under, under, how far down is the lowest?
How deep?
I heard five feet, some spots, and 10 feet, but that wasn't the bed off, that was only to the flow.
Okay, depends on where the pits were, if they were in the exact footprint of the building, possibly.
Yeah, we can take a look at that, the problem there is reliance, so that's shared
information from somebody else done for some other reason, you, you can't rely on that, it's just useful information that we can look at, so, let's do that first, and go from there. The last one pertains to, it's a twofold question, because I wanna talk a bit about stormwater, but whether or not you will engage another consultant to act, in quotes, as borough engineer, to review these plans that you are preparing and submitting to yourself effectively, two ways to look at that. The reason we ask is if you're gonna do that, we'd like that to be done now, so that we can bring them to the table and have conversations with them about how to administer the design process.
This is the, this is the one question I thought was really the most important, and I wanted, I'd like to ask if you could go into the detail a little bit more like you did for Barb and I, and, you know, so the council has a better understanding of, you know, what you're asking here. This, this, this one, to me, was the big issue, Michael, so.
Yeah, so, and I, I wanna talk about stormwater, I think that's the most important aspect of this question, but one way to do this is, effectively, we're acting, we could act as consultant engineer for both the Friends and the borough, you're the applicant, submit the plans, and you base your review and input and approval of the land development plan on our input, acting in your stead. Another way is to hire another party, a third-party engineer to act as borough engineer, and review what we submit to your, what you submit to yourself, actually. Stormwater management is one of the most significant aspects of that, because your ordinance contemplates certain exemptions from stormwater management requirements, particularly rate control relative to where facilities are located, and this proposed facility is, first of all, gonna be located in a 100-year floodplain of Spring Creek, second of all, in a influence zone of a nearby water supply, third of all, near a known source of contaminant, whether or not this exact site is contaminated, it's very close to that, so the, the two facets of stormwater, rate control, water in fast, out slow, slow down the rate, and volume control, and volume control means you have to capture and hold a certain volume of stormwater, and get rid of it any other way but discharge to the stream. The typical way to do that is to infiltrate it, in fact, you could say that's pretty much the only way, there's some other pie in the sky ways, but wouldn't be appropriate here. This is not a good area for infiltration, for the reasons I cited, in a floodplain, it's in an influence zone of a water supply, it's next to a known contaminant area, I don't think infiltration is a good idea at all. Somebody in your ordinance, as the borough engineer, has to agree with that and issue an exemption on that aspect of stormwater. Same for rate control, a 100-year floodplain doesn't mean that you're gonna get a 100-year flood to those limits during a 100-year storm, those are related but separate concepts. Nonetheless, your attenuation requirements are up to and including the 100-year storm, so the facility would have to be located down in the floodplain, somewhere near the structure, and I don't think that would do much good. There are ways to work around that, and one of the most common is, they call it a B-to-peak analysis, to show that the accelerated runoff from this site leaves quicker than the peak storm would ever arrive, and other way is just to waive the requirement, out of engineering judgment. So, that third-party person would have to act, or you would, to grant those waivers or exemptions from those ordinance aspects, and that's how we brought up the notion of whether or not you would engage a third party.
Do you have an engineer that you're used to working with for stormwater runoff?
Yeah, we have a, we have a contract, and I knew you were gonna bring it up there, Tom, or somebody was, it's Don, and I can't think of Don's last name, Don Fransen is the, our stormwater engineer, and we, we could, we could run him by, we could run him by Don, some, some, you know, that wouldn't be a problem. The, the question, I guess, is, is this council want to run it by a stormwater engineer when you have another engineer working on it, so we would be paying Don for work that, I think that's the crux of the question, or part of it.
So, what happens when we go back to erosion and settlement control, the yellow part says, but rather than Center County, but rather only the Center County Conservation District approval of the erosion control plan, but that NPDES is more effective, I think, than you think it is, because I, when I was at AccuWeather, we had, we had to use, we got away from it, but we had to, we had to work to do it, and I'm concerned that you start playing with that, and then you're gonna end up owning it for a while, for that, that permit, that one permit.
The typical threshold for that one permit is more than one acre of proposed earth disturbance, this project will be well under that. However, you're correct, if there were a prior NPDES permit on the property, which I can't know, could they see this becomes a later phase of that prior permit? I don't think so, I don't think that's what's gonna happen, but we would consult with the Conservation District early in the process to find out the requirements. You're correct, that's a significant permit, and especially would be so here.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are being hired by these folks, right, to do this correctly? What you're doing is governed by organizations like Center County Government, Center County Code Enforcement, DEP, different things like that, right?
Correct.
Probably gonna be done the best way that you can, that's permitted by law or ordinance, correct?
Must.
So, yeah, I mean, this is, this isn't the first time you guys have done this, right?
No.
Right, so, I don't see why we would have to get anybody else involved, but that's, that's my opinion. Sounds like you guys know what you're doing, and everything you're talking about is way, way beyond, you know, my knowledge base, so, I know that these things are governed by code and laws, and that there's no way you would risk your reputation by doing it incorrectly, and causing a problem that would cost somebody money down the road, if it was done wrong, and it sounds like you're, you're on the right path, and I think what he was asking was, he would want that person at the table from the get-go, so we would need to decide whether or not we want that person. I don't think it's necessary, but that's just me, it sounds like you guys are gonna do everything you can to make sure it's done correctly and lawfully, so.
We can, but understand we would turn around then and request council to grant exemptions from certain aspects of your stormwater ordinance, so if you're comfortable in doing that, and it would be based upon what we, the input we give you.
What the engineers decide would be best.
Maybe the middle ground is to consult with Don on just that question and aspect, maybe that's a middle ground compromise.
Did he spell Dawn's last name?
F-R-A-N-S-O-N. Franston.
Thanks.
I think he's, I think he's the engineer for College Township, but he contracts with Balfont Borough.
What it does, Ken, is it puts some extra eyes on the project, and sometimes even though you're doing the job right, you come back and you're bad, and Chase Eric of Balfont Borough, even though we had no part in this. And this has happened to us before on the water. We, we hired an engineer to review plans for renovation of our wastewater treatment plant, and we're certified and agreed to by the engineer that we hired. Things weren't done correctly, they came back and sued us, even though we had an engineer to review the plans and said they were correct. And we, we, we ended up paying a part, portion of that lawsuit. So it's not uncommon, I don't think, Michael, to have our own, I don't know of another project, you have other engineers that look at, or that you've got in the world. I don't think that's an oddball.
Very, very common thing to do that.
So it's not that we're...
An oddball here, thinking of, of that. It's just an extra step, if something happens, that we have some liability protection of the project.
Thank you, Doug. I do agree with that. I would prefer that we have our own engineer take a look at this, too. My question is, since that is going to cost the Borough money, and we had talked originally that the stage was not going to cost the Borough anything, so what do we do with that?
I think it's covered under one of the items in here, that Friends should reimburse the Borough.
For, for anything, I, I believe.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that is right this minute, but that, that was a question that, that I had, is to just be sure that, that we adhere to our original talk, was that it didn't cost the Borough anything.
I guess the question is, the sooner we bring people in like this, the better?
Yeah, we request, if that's your inclination, that you notify Dawn that that's your desire, and then we'll submit our questions to him directly, copying you on this matter, the stormwater question. We'd like to do that ideally even as soon as this week.
We can do that, Michael, no problem.
Okay.
And we'll ask the committee to approve payment.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll email Dawn and copy you on the email.
Okay. That was the highlights.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does council have anything else related to what we've talked about?
I would just say, Madam President, if we, if we could, you know, have council respond back to us sometime in the next few days on the draft cooperative agreement with any comments, maybe by the end of the week, and then we can make the changes, and then get it to Friends early next week, you know, to get the agreement signed.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
That's agreeable to everybody.
That's great for us. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, do we adjourn? Do you have anything else? Okay, we will adjourn and be back here at 7:30.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Balfont Borough Council Business Meeting. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clayton, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton, here. Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tostie Vasey is excused and Ms. Meckley is excused. Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. In accordance with Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action is being added to the agenda. Do we have anything for the agenda additions tonight? Balfont Borough Council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comments will be public comment and then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will only comment on the amendment before the final votes are taken. You must be a Balfont resident, a nonprofit representative, a business owner, or an official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street municipality. If outside Balfont Borough, comments are limited to three minutes. Moving on to communications. There is an opportunity for public comment, period notice. The Long Range Transportation Plan 2055, Tuesday, July 22, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. and from 6:00 to 7:30 in the COG General Forum Room, 2643 Gateway Drive in State College. There is no council action needed. Is it possible to put that on the website for the information, please? Balfont EMS, the Seventh Annual Joint Meeting Invitation for 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 30. The meeting is held at the Balfont EMS on Phoenix Avenue in Balfont. You will need to RSVP to Scott Rote by Monday, July 28. No other council action is required. We did receive an email from a resident concerned about herbicide use. I know in previous meetings, Joanne Tostie Vasey has been working with that. So I would like to keep that until Joanne's back in town so we can talk about that a little bit more, if needed. Under the consent agenda, could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, Brackville.
Thank you.
Second, McKean.
Thank you, Shawna. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I do not have a report this evening, but I would like to thank Sergeant Knightig for being here in Chief Whitmer's absence. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Thompson has some notes for us on here under reports. Under current and old business, the Potter Street Railroad spur. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the use of $29,000 from the Special Projects Fund to cover the cost and transfer of the spur to the borough from Cede COG?
So moved, Clayton.
Thank you, Deb.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you, Randy. Do we have discussion on that? We have two questions. I would like to read the memo from Mr. Holderman so that our residents also know what this is about. Dating back to 2023, Cede COG Joint Rail Authority approached the borough about donating a parcel of property. We've been referring to that as the spur along Potter Street. I have been in contact with Cairo Posture Pack to determine if this was still in option. Cede COG is still interested in donating the property. I assume part of the holdup is that there appears to be some indecision on how to transfer the property and attorneys for both the rail authority and the county are involved. At any rate, it was determined the best approach is to have a survey and subdivision completed. Mr. Holderman has contacted Pantera by getting an estimate of the cost to have this work done, and it is $9,800. In addition, if we need to take, if we were to take the property as is with Cede COG Railroad leaving the rail lines, we would need to pay the cost of the metal, which is $18,932 to Cede COG Joint Rail Authority. Thus, to have the property donated to the borough would still cost the borough in the vicinity of $29,000 when you add both those expenses. After getting to this point, Mr. Holderman asked Lori McGowan, who is our finance director, if funds were budgeted last year during the budget process for the property, and the answer was no, it was not budgeted. Mr. Holderman believes that council approved moving forward with the property sometime in late 2022 when we were approached by the authority. There are two questions for council. Is council still interested in the property? And can $29,000 be used out of a special projects fund to cover the cost to make the transfer happen?
What are we gaining out of either one, either trying to go with it or not? At this point, if the money we're trying to throw around here, I'm not sure I'm convinced that it's a good thing.
It's totally up to council, Randy. It's just that it's work, I was picking up on what was left off. That's all, trying to, you know, complete the, get the transaction completed. If the borough determines that they no longer want that piece of property, then we just, you know, we'll just let Cede COG know we're no longer interested.
Part of that was trying to get that old building tore down, and that's just not gonna, doesn't seem like it's gonna happen.
Well, that building doesn't, that's not part of it. That building belongs to, it's private property. I think the purpose was is to make a safe pedestrian walkway for the people that lived out on Potter Street so that they didn't have to walk along the road. So ultimately, it's almost like one of these instances, like in the past when the borough purchased the Match Factory or the Clasters Lot and took years, you know, you just, you kind of wait until some timely grants are available so that you can make it what you want to make it. But probably for a few years, you know, it would just be, it would just be something that would sit there until we got some money to make it a nice pedestrian walkway. And then in addition to that, I mean, we still would have to work out an agreement with the Balfont Historical Rail Society because they have the two historic trains that use that portion of the track as well.
It becomes less usable as a walkway when it has rail lines down it. Because I can picture it as a green, more of a green walkway that is easier to walk through or push a stroller on. But with the rail lines on it, it kind of loses that, I think, walkability. And then also if trains are parking on it, then you cannot walk on it either. So now you have a kind of a hazard in your walkway. So I can see it as one, but not being used for both purposes.
We have offered a few times to try to negotiate for that building that's owned privately. That certainly would enhance the reasons to make this purchase or to make this transfer of property to the borough. That even though those negotiations have failed in the past, that doesn't mean that they could maybe happen a couple of years from now. So if we have a chance to own this property and make that a safer walkway, it might be a good idea. But my question is, what is the special funds project?
I just didn't use bottled water.
Well, full disclosure, I'm going to ask for some special projects money later on our agenda. So not for me, but for the central Pennsylvania. But it's a tough call. I think it would be nice to own it.
But there is the option, would be cheaper if you just, you know, procure the property, do what Johanna says, tell Cede COG that we don't want the rail, and, you know, don't pay that portion of it, and, you know, they remove the rail lines. I think the idea was is to make, you know, put some screenings down in between the rails so you would use those as kind of your support on the side. So it'd be kind of like a rails-to-trails, walking out there was the idea. But again, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It would probably be at least a few years at minimum before that would happen.
So if memory serves me, wasn't this about a parking area on the opposite side of the road? And they would have to walk up to go to the establishment, the cideri? And the concern now is, for me, that the cideri's no longer there, and there's an ice cream parlor there, which could make it even more dangerous, especially when parents are taking their children there. And I think that's a real concern. From what I've seen already, this is a popular place and it's receiving a lot of attention.
Thank you, Shawna. That's a good point. So if we did not keep the rails, it would be approximately $19,000 less. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because the land has been donated.
I'm going to say yes, Barr, but I want to qualify that. If the rails, the rails for the historic railroad trains has to stay. So I can't recall whether that estimate included from where it veered off the main track and went all the way back or if they left it, you know, a portion for the trains and then said, okay, it'll be from here back. I'm not really sure. So, I mean, it's conceivable there could be a smaller cost because you'd have to leave a certain portion of the rail line there for the historic trains, as I said.
Okay, so that would be a cost to us.
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Or maybe we can negotiate that differently.
Do we need to decide on this tonight? Or is this something that we could mull over options and come back to it another day?
Well, from my standpoint, you've been sitting on it, not you, but you've been sitting on it for two years. So I don't think waiting any longer is going to hurt anything.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Would you want to add this to the next agenda? Maybe with a little more information for that short area of track?
I can do that, yeah.
Anything else? Any other information that we would like before we make this decision?
How much does that extra spur affect the historical railroad? That would be something I would want to know.
For the two trains, when you see the two, if you've seen the two trains, cars sitting there, that would be what we, I think, my understanding is, is that that's where Ralph left off working with the Balfont Historic Railroad Society. They were trying to work on an agreement, you know, we had to establish, we'll have to establish an agreement with them saying, you know, you'll have room for those two trains. So that's as far as it would be, you know, just where they park them, that's it. Then there'll be a block and it would stop right there. They wouldn't, you couldn't go back much farther anyway because it gets pretty, you know, dicey, those rails.
It might be helpful, if possible, Dawn, to have some photos of that for next meeting? No, no. I know, I know I've seen them before.
Yeah, I said something to Julie before the meeting. I said, well, we maybe should put up, then I said, nah, they don't want to talk.
I do, I do know what you're talking about, but maybe Rita doesn't.
We can, we can do that, Doug.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Julie.
So we will just let this till the next meeting, then. Okay, the Locust Lane Agreement, that was in your packet. There is no council action needed on that. Senator County Transportation Services Agreement, also in your packet. There was no action needed on that. Deb, since you are so involved in this, was there anything you would like to add?
I just wanted to let people know that the Center County Board of Commissioners unanimously and enthusiastically approved this agreement at their July 2nd meeting, or July 1st meeting, it was last Tuesday. And I believe so far only two or three people have signed up. So we're off to a slow start, but we're going to be watching this every month when we get the statement and see how well the public adjusts this service.
I can add to that. I had a message from Mr. Lamson. Just remind people to call the Transportation Office for details about the service and sign up. I don't know, is that their, is that their number on our website for that? Is, okay. So it's just 814-355-6807. And like Deb has said, so far, so good. It seems to be working well. And Mr. Lamson has agreed to come in next month and give us a full report of how it's going and give council an opportunity to ask him questions of how it may improve or keep it as it is.
Thank you. Thank you both. Anything else? Okay, review of Ordinance, Chapter 405, Regulations of Parks. Could I have a motion and a second to send Ordinance, Chapter 405, to the Ordinance Committee to review and provide recommendations to council?
So moved, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie.
Second, Brackville.
Any discussion?
What are the concerns about Chapter 405 that needs to be reviewed?
This was me that brought this up. There is, there is some discussion with the last time with not-for-profits based in Balfont Borough. I would like to have that clarified a little bit in that what kind of nonprofits are we talking about? Do they have to be a 501(c)(3)? Do they need to be registered with someone? I don't know the answers to these, but I think that would be important. And also, when someone applies for an exemption from the rental fee, I think they should supply us with the information needed so that we have more information to go on instead of trying to find out where they're located and what's going on with that. And anything else in this that the committee may see, may see that wants to be updated a little bit or the council would like to have updated?
This is just for parks?
This is for, yeah, it's the recreation, it's the ordinance for the recreation. Authority of the Recreation Committee is what the title of it is, and it's about five pages. So I thought it would go, it should go to the Ordinance Committee with input from parks, if we decide to go that way.
They're involved with that committee, so they should be.
Right, right. So that's a start to send it to the Ordinance Committee and then figure out from there where it should go. Any other questions, comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
No.
Mr. Brackville.
No.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Ms. McKean.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Five to three passes.
Thank you. Next, under current and old business, the borough's fee schedule was changed and updated. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the updated fee schedule as presented?
So moved, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie.
Second, Johnson.
Thank you, Doug. Comments?
Good job, long time, good, good thing to do. What was updated? Did I try to look through that?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
There were two items.
One, two, three, four.
We had the B&amp;B sewer fee at $25 per room per year. Fee for final numbers, less than 10 days' notice, that's $10. This is underwater sewer refuse. An extra refuse can brush or grass is $80 now. That's just the stand, that's just the price of the containers that we pay. And then we added the compost from Musser Lane, the $15 per cubic yard that Mr. Johnson asked for. Then a background check fee for police for $8. And I think that was, yeah.
So that's if someone asks for a background check through the police department? Is that what?
I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not sure. I know when we ask for background checks for employment, it's already on our employment application. It's $10. But what this one is, it must be, if someone comes into the police department and wants a, you know, a background check, they got to pay $8 for it, I'm assuming. I don't know. Do you know anything about that?
I'm not 100% certain what the cost would be with that, but I'll get in conduct with Chief and let him know to figure out what that actually is for.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
And Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have Resolution Number 07072025-01, Balfont Borough Center County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Could I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 07072025-01, please?
So moved, Brackville.
Second, McKean.
Thank you. Discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a list of items to be auctioned at Munisabid. Could I have a motion and a second approving the provided list to be posted on Munisabid?
Make the motion, Johnson.
Thank you, Doug.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
And Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Financial contribution for air service development at State College Regional Airport. Could I have a motion and a second to contribute $5,000 towards air service development at State College Regional Airport?
I'll make the motion, Johnson.
Thank you, Doug.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie. Discussion, please.
I can start full disclosure on the, I'm on the Airport Authority, Center County Airport Authority. And we're always trying to attract either a legacy airline or a low-cost carrier to the center region. We had Allegiant Air, but because of COVID, we lost them. And each airline that considers coming to the center region always is looking for an incentive package. Right now, we have about $107,000. That is real money, and we have about 600,000 or 500,000 in fee waivers. This is an ongoing battle. We are trying to attract Breeze Airline. Breeze is a national airline, low-cost carrier. I don't know if any of you have flown Breeze. They're similar to Allegiant. They started in 2021, I believe. They have destinations all over the U.S., Pittsburgh, Newark, Washington, Dulles. They go to Denver, San Francisco, L.A., Orange County, San Diego, Phoenix, Fort Worth, Orlando. L.A., Orange County, San Diego, Phoenix, Fort Worth, Orlando, Tampa, Sarasota, Brayton, and Fort Myers. If you just Google them, you'll see they're a pretty, they're a really good, low-cost carrier. We have the chance to, this package needs to be together by July 15. We are being considered as, to offer our incentive package to them by July 15. If they would happen to accept it, we could have low-cost carrier air service by Breeze in October or November of this year. They are considering maybe eight or 10 other regional airports. They specialize in small airport, regional airports to upgrade service. So we are one that they are considering. Right now, they're in Scranton, Wilkes-Barre, and Erie, and we would be the central Pennsylvania location. The other closest one would be Newark, Pittsburgh, Lancaster. So I'm asking, as we've done in the past, when we tried to, the same package offered it to American Airlines to have a direct flight from State College Regional to Charlotte, which is Americans, one of their main hubs. You can get almost anywhere from Charlotte instead of having to go State College Regional to Philadelphia. At that time, I think we offered $2,000 to the package. Benner has just contributed, or offered $7,000. I know we're not Benner Township, but I don't think $5,000 is unreasonable request out of that special project funds. So I'm pleading, this isn't a done deal. This is just a commitment that if Breeze would decide to offer the low-cost carrier service to State College Regional, we would commit to contributing $5,000 to that incentive package. Now, if we don't get chosen this round, that doesn't mean that sometime in the springtime, we may be reconsidered. But full disclosure, I'm a traveler to the South. I was disappointed when Allegiant left. However, I think Breeze gives us more opportunity for a low-cost carrier than Allegiant did. So that's my plea. I'll try to answer any questions for you if I can.
Doug, are you basically looking for a letter of commitment for airport development? So if an airline, we would commit to making the contribution, and if the airline...
I think that's what we're looking for, something that...
Then it would be paid.
If it happens, we would like then to pay up for the $5,000.
But at the same time, if you're, if a specific airline decides not to come in, we would still make that commitment towards future development?
We can, but I think we're specifically asking, I mean, yeah, you're right, that would be nice to use, yeah, that would be helpful, yes. That's a very good point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, when you said the $107,000, that's what's been committed so far?
That's the, that's the financial plan, that's the money we have, cash. Now, we've offered them some other monies in rental of, see, the airlines rent space at the airport, their counter. So we're offering them some, some discounts on the rental space, some other incentives that comes out to about $600,000.
Okay, so that, that's the fee waiver. So the $107,000 you don't have yet, you have commitments for that, is that?
We have commitments, yes.
Okay, so it would be, we would add to that pot, is that what you're telling us?
Yeah. I'm sorry, we have $500,000 fee waivers, okay? Those are the rental incentives. This isn't unusual for airlines to ask for incentives. This happens every day. I mean, that's how you attract them to your airport.
What is the total commitment you're looking for?
Probably a million.
Pardon me?
A million.
A million, oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. The more incentive money we have, the better.
Right, okay. And that deadline's coming up really fast, too?
Yes. But, you know, it, there, we've had several talks, several positive talks, talks with Breeze, and they're very interested in serving this community. And we really are lacking those, that low-cost carrier. That would be a pretty good deal. I can tell you other cities that they, Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Louisville, Richmond, Norfolk, Raleigh-Durham. We could go directly to Myrtle Beach, Charleston, Savannah, Jacksonville, Daytona Beach, Salisbury, Ocean City, Norfolk, Richmond. They fly to Maine, to Bangor, Manchester, Hartford, Providence. Full disclosure, when I'm in Florida, I see big billboards from central Florida to Maine, Breeze Airlines.
Where would they start flying to first? I don't assume they would do all of...
They're, the first, they're servicing the South, Orlando would be one of the first destinations. I'm not sure about Greensboro, Winston-Salem, one of their hubs, because they do do connecting flights. These aren't always direct flights from State College Regional to, let's say, Orlando might be a direct flight, but there are other flights that they would fly you to a connecting flight somewhere in the South.
Okay, thank you.
Is it specifically on their end monetary-based, or do they take a look at the region with Penn State University?
They look at the regional and implantments that may occur. We've given them that data. Yeah, there's several factors.
I'm sure Penn State is also involved in these talks.
Somewhat.
So Doug, if this goes through, the $5,000, and you get it, that's great. If it doesn't, where does it set?
Where does the $5,000 set? It just sets in the bank account here in the Borough.
Oh, okay.
It's just, we've, like Ms. Clayton said, that this could be a general donation to transportation in the county. And this is a recruitment tool for an airline to come into center region. So unless we get a commitment from an airline, it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't come out of our account. We just made the commitment that we would make this donation.
So it would be, it would end up being a budget line item?
It would, but we may not use it.
Right, right. But we don't have, we don't have that money right now allotted. That would be our special projects.
Special project fund. Yes, yes.
So we would have access to this money if they came in next week?
Yes. It's a possibility before the end of the year.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Doug, did you say what research you've done on the airline as far as, like, customer satisfaction or anything like that?
It's very highly rated. They've, they've, they're using A220s, I think, and they have, I forget what their fleet is, but they're very highly rated for customer service.
Yeah. Just as a cursory check, I was looking on my phone, and I saw a bunch of really low number ratings for...
Really?
Customer service and whatnot. That's why I was curious.
Anybody that I've talked to has had a good experience with Breeze. But I believe what you're seeing there.
Yeah, and of course, you know, could be somebody just disgruntled for whatever reason, too. Oftentimes, don't hear people say good things, just the bad, so.
I forget the gentleman's name it started, but he started with JetBlue, and then he decided to create his own airline himself. It's been really successful, and he doesn't waste any time.
Is there any other discussion, questions, comments?
Is that the only airline that's a possibility, or are there any others that you're looking at, or is, is that the only thing that's available?
At this time, we are only looking at Breeze because we're always looking at any airline, like Delta has pulled out, we're hoping that they come back in, but, but they don't have a lot of interest. So really, all we have right now is American and United. So the answer to your question is, Rita, yes, we'll recruit any airline that, or talk to, with any airline that wishes to talk to us and, and provide service to the center region.
I just wasn't sure how many there were actually available to, to come to the area.
Well, you have Delta, United, American, Allegiant, I can't name Southwest, I can't name them all. But they're very particular of where they provide service.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, could we have a roll call vote? We will be voting to contribute $5,000 towards air service development at State College Regional Airport.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton? Yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
And Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. That's very, very kind, very helpful.
Thank you, Doug, for all your work on that. We appreciate it. Council members, for the good of the order, Ms. Clayton, I'm going to start with you tonight, and then we'll go...
We missed Municbid, didn't we? Or did we vote on that? We did? Oh, gosh, I must have been zoning out there for a second.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us, though, just in case. I appreciate that. Did you have anything for...
Yes, actually, just remind the public that there is a comment period for the long-range transportation plan in Center County. So if you're out and about and there are traffic issues that are driving you crazy, this is your opportunity to let the MPO know what improvements need to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I just hope everybody's enjoying the summer and keeping cool and enjoying Balfont this summer.
I'm going to throw this in here. I'm sitting with the Spring Creek Watershed as a chair. We are looking at revising our, the way we do our, I don't want to call it, our accounts and stuff like that. The past few years, when I first got on there, two years ago, we were at 15, or 10, 10 cents to people, and then we bumped it up to 15 the last two years. And we're looking at now, looking for another 25, or, I'm sorry, another 10 cents to go to 25. And without, without doing that, we don't have enough money right now to sustain much. We all try to do the best we can, but it's, when the money's not there, and you've got to work with grants, and it takes a lot of time, maybe, to get some of these grants moving and other things, you know, that you have to go through. I think it's important that we take care of this Spring Creek Watershed. That's, that's probably going to be coming up here for our next, next year for '26.
Randy, would you want something put on the agenda in the next couple of meetings?
We can, because there'll be some, there'll be a letter coming out about it.
Okay.
We're going to be talking about that tomorrow morning.
We'll make sure that it gets on, on the agenda. Thank you very much. Rita?
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
I just have a thank you to the community members who came out on Friday evening for the Balfont Community Bands and State College Municipal Bands joint concert down at Tallyrand. There was a fantastic turnout, and it was really nice to see all of the community that was there to support our organization with the community band and just to have a concert in the park. It was really nice.
Thank you, Johanna.
I have to second that. I was there. You had two great singers who did the vocals on, so it was an enjoyable evening.
Just an update on some signage issues. Council's probably aware that one sign at the Armory blew over with one of the storms there a few months ago. We were looking in, Julie and myself, I was looking into that sign, Julie was looking into the signs for the police department. So we ended up getting prices from Bob Bowersocks, talked to Lori. Probably this year, there just isn't any money in the budget, you know, for that. So it's just something I would urge council to consider for 2026. If you want to see the signage replaced, we'll probably need to add it into the 2026 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holderman. I have nothing tonight. So we will be adjourning. Could I have a motion in a second, please? Thank you. Thank you. On favor, say aye. Thank you. Yes, we will. We are now having an executive session to discuss personnel, and that will be over in the Oak Room in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.